Good. And we just got our remaining members are joining in now.
Okay.
And you just got our remaining members are joining in now. A second to join us panelists. All right, Madam Chair, you can get started.
Terrific. Thank you very much, Randy. I appreciate it. Good morning, everybody, and thank you for joining us at this meeting of the Board of Governors. For those in the public and the media watching via YouTube, we say welcome to you as well. So this morning's meeting is focused on only one agenda item, which is to consider ratification of a number of side letters that we have negotiated with AppScuff that will help advance the implementation of the university integrations that were approved by the Board earlier this summer. To get us started, let me ask Sharisa to do a roll call of the Board.
Certainly. Good morning. Governor Vogel. Representative Briggs.
Here, here, I'm sorry, here.
All right, thank you. Governor Gindelsberger.
Here.
Secretary Jones. Designee Tara Williams.
Here.
Senator Martin. Designee Terry Trago.
Terry Trago is here. Sorry, here.
Thank you. Governor Mazur.
He's here, he's on the phone.
Governor Moskowitz.
And actually, just pause for a second. If there's any board members who are calling in, if you could press star nine, then I'll know you're a board member. I see Sam Smith already. Okay.
Secretary Ortega. Designee Tanya Garcia.
Here.
Representative Roy.
Here.
Governor Roberts.
Here.
Senator Schwank. Designee Thomas Gumbar.
Here.
Governor Scott.
Here.
Chair Shapiro. Senator Skinner.
Here.
Governor Smith.
Here.
Governor Washington.
Here.
Governor Weaver.
Here.
Governor Yeomans.
Here.
And Dr. Phillips, high faculty liaison.
Here. And if there were any other board members who are on the phone who may have been muted earlier, you can go ahead and identify yourself. I know Sam Smith, we got you.
We have him.
Any other board members? All right. And if you were here and aren't able to identify, just contact me afterwards.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Sharisa. Appreciate that. Let us go to public comment. Any members of the general public who wish to speak during the public comment period have been advised to dial into the public comment phone line. Let me now turn to Randy to see if there is anyone who wishes to speak.
All right. So if you are a member of the public and would like to speak, press star nine to raise your hand and we'll call on you. We'll give a moment for that response. Again, star nine. All right, Madam Chair, there's no one raising their hand for that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hold on one second. We did get a raise hand.
Okay.
Area code six one zero and ends with five oh nine. So let me ask the caller to identify themselves with their name. And then offer comments.
Hi. Hi, my name is Nick Marcel. I'm a graduate student at West Chester University. I know that you've heard me months and months ago. I just wanted to throw my voice out there to at least try to represent so many voices that were silenced back in July. And June and May, a sixty day public comment period for a shoddy consolidation plan that is not getting the public's consent, that is not getting the will of the people of Pennsylvania, that is not actually trying to hear students, faculty and staff who are losing jobs, losing services, being forced to take online classes, being forced to maybe go to another campus. It is absurd. It is saddening. You all need to do better. You all need to fight for a fully funded state system of higher education. That is not what I see being done today. That is not what I see being done by just about any of the board members, at least currently. I really hope you can change that tune. I really hope that you can actually listen to the people of Pennsylvania who overwhelmingly during the public hearings said they didn't want this plan. And it's a consolidation. It's not integration. Get your words right. I know that you are manipulating definitions. You're saying there are employment reductions. You're saying it's integration, okay? Be straight with people. Be truthful with people. It is saddening what I saw back in July of how swiftly and easily pretty much just every single board member just voted yes. Okay, there were some little comments of saying, well, I wish it to be another way. Well, actually do something about it. And I really think that if you care about the students of PASHI, if you care about the faculty, if you care about the staff, then you would. But I don't know if that's the case. I don't know. I don't see it. I don't think other people see it. And I would really hope that that would change. And I would really hope that that would change. But if you're not going to do that, well, then other people are going to try and actually fight for it because you're not. And it's sad, okay? Every single student in Pennsylvania deserves to have a fully funded state system. We're forty eighth, and I know the chancellor likes to talk about it, but I don't personally see him doing things actively about it. Actually, maybe having a rally to fight for more funding. Maybe actually trying to show what conversations he might be having with the legislature. I don't see an open book. I don't see transparency on those accords. And I didn't see transparency over the summer when it came to the plan, when it came to actually having conversations with people, and when it came to sharing people's public comments. I know so many people across the state who never heard of this consolidation plan. And that's because you didn't care to actually push it to the public to get their thoughts, to get what they wanted, which is a fully funded state system of higher education. It's sad, and that's pretty much all that I have to say. My name is Nick Marcel. I'm a part of PASHI defenders, and I really hope that you do better. No, I want you to do better. I.
Nick.
Yeah.
I think we lost Nick. Okay. All right.
Okay. Is. Are you trying to get back on or?
I don't see him.
Okay.
I heard him say that was all he had to say, but I don't know if that was or not, so.
Right.
I don't see his number in the line. Okay. I think we can move on, Madam Chair.
Okay, let us go then to remarks from our statewide union leaders. Dr. Martin, do you have any remarks?
Yes, I do, and thank you. Chairwoman Shapiro, Chancellor Greenstein, governors, university presidents and guests. Today, this board will consider approving seven side letter agreements to our collective bargaining agreement. One side letter applies to all fourteen of our universities and will ensure faculty and students are provided with stability over the next few years. Six are applicable to the six universities that are slated for consolidation. The AppScuff Legislative Assembly ratified all of the side letters at its meeting on Friday, September tenth, and we encourage you to approve them today. We appreciate the spirit of cooperation that led to these agreements, but it required approximately eight months of negotiations to get to this vote today. I highlight this because the side letter agreements that pertain to California, Clarion, Edinburgh, Bloomsburg, Lockhaven and Mansfield are just the first six side letters we have negotiated. They represent important articles in our collective bargaining agreement, and they will permit the development of the curriculum to begin. They will provide clarity regarding the leadership of academic departments and specify the procedures that will be in place as faculty members progress in their careers. But I must note that there is much still to do. By our count, there are at least thirteen other articles we must bargain over because they will be affected by the consolidation. We will continue to negotiate with the state system on the other affected articles in the months ahead, but in short, there is a long road. At the July Board of Governors meeting, I highlighted many issues and questions that must be addressed prior to the consolidation of these six universities and action that is scheduled to occur in ten months. Questions remain about middle states accreditation and the fate of accredited programs on our campuses. We still anxiously await the decision of the NCAA permitting athletic teams to remain on all six campuses. Students and faculty remain wary of the number of online classes that may be required to complete their degree. We anticipate that the work on the curriculum will soon begin, but we know that the plan is for a three-year implementation of the curriculum array, and it is our belief that will take that long. There remains much uncertainty and anxiety regarding consolidation on these six campuses among the students, among the faculty and the staff. This process, coupled with retrenchments that occurred at four of our campuses last year and the threats of the retrenchments this year, has left many feeling defeated. And all of this is happening while faculty struggle to offer face-to-face classes in a safe way amidst the ongoing pandemic. The combination of these things has negatively impacted morale on a number of our universities. I can tell you from my visits to our campuses and meetings with our chapter presidents that our faculty are exhausted as they begin this new academic year. This is not typical, and that makes it alarming. I urge the university presidents who are here today to recognize the legitimacy of these feelings among our faculty as you call upon them to do some heavy lifting in the coming months. I began my comments today speaking about the spirit of cooperation, and I want to end on that note. We can all agree that the mission of our universities is to provide access to an affordable and high-quality education for the students of our Commonwealth and beyond. As faculty and coaches, we see firsthand how critical affordability is for our students and student athletes. We know the importance of increased funding for our universities and for the students enrolled in them. I pledge today that AppScuff will continue to work with the state system in advocating for the funding necessary to keep the promise of affordability and access to a high-quality education for students from all backgrounds. I thank you very much for your time, and I continue to wish you and your families all good health. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Appreciate that. And Dr. Martin, I really want to thank you for your leadership in AppScuff and for the truly collaborative approach that everybody took and co-creating the sensible solutions that we have before us today. Let me also thank again the General Assembly and the governor and his team for supporting our university integration plans as we redesign our system. The one-time funds they are providing will truly help us move this work forward in a very real way and in a way that helps address our student needs, equity gaps, and all of the outcomes that we truly care about for our state system. So as we move into our action item, let me ask Dan if he has any comments before we turn it over to Brian to answer any questions board members might have. Dan?
Thanks, Cindy. Just to echo your thanks of Dr. Martin and her colleagues, and also thanks to members of the negotiating team for teams, actually, for their creativity and patience and mutual support over the last several months, and I look forward to any questions that the board members may have. Thanks.
Terrific. Okay. So let's see, I think I'm going to ask Brian to present first, Randy, or do I go and do I need to make the motion first?
Actually, Brian is here to answer any questions the board members have. So you can make the motion and we can do the questions as part of that.
I will do that then. Okay, I would look for a motion, please, that the Board of Governors ratifies the attached side letters and authorizes the chancellor to execute the appropriate documents. May I have that motion?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you for the second. And now, is there any discussion? Randy, I'll let you sort of conduct that.
Yeah, board members, you can click the raise hand feature, or if you're on the phone, press the star nine and I can call on you if you have any questions that Brian can address. As you know, Brian is our head of labor relations and has a background on this. And if you don't have the click hand, click raise hand feature, just speak up then. Uh, there's a question. And I think two and five, I think that might be Governor Vogel, perhaps? Area code two one five. And you'll need to press star six to unmute your line.
Yes.
There you go.
Yes, this is Bob Vogel.
Good morning. Good morning, Governor Vogel. Did you have a question?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Representative Roy.
Good morning, everyone. A couple of things here. Looking at these side letters, the first six seem to be pretty routine things, and they make sense based on the integrations. Number seven is pretty concerning, to be honest. I don't know that we have enough information to make a decision. When you look at the E and G budget, about seventy percent of it is salaries and benefits. So the number one cost that we have and the majority of our costs are salaries and benefits for the employees, and we value all of our employees, but the number of employees that we have needs to match proportionally with the number of students that we have. And I haven't seen the headcount for how many students we have. You know, that should be, that number should be available. We're a month into the school year, three weeks into the school year. I haven't seen updated financial information, and I haven't seen an annual report. So we're kind of making a decision in a vacuum. If we approve that side letter, we're basically saying the number one thing that we can do to control our costs, we're going to agree not to do it for the next three years, and we're just going to hope that everything falls in place. And so I just wondered, when is the fall headcount number going to be available?
I'll take that if you like. So I think there's a couple. Shall I try to take that?
Yes. Yes, thank you. Sorry.
So a couple of things. There's a couple of things in it. Let me take them in order. So the fall headcount is available at Fall Freeze, which is in a couple of weeks. I don't know if Kate is on or Randy, if you have the date in your head. Usually around mid-October, so that will have the numbers then, and they're made public as they always are. And there'll be, and, so thing one. Thing two is our budget process is an annual process. And as part of that budget process, universities submit comprehensive plans that include their strategic objectives and their budget projections for a multi-year period. Those have just been submitted, and they will be integrated and used to create the appropriations requests that we'll be recommending to the Board at its next meeting in October. So you'll have that information as well in a couple of weeks. And then the third thing, but I think it's maybe the most important, is that the side letter doesn't actually eliminate retrenchments or furloughs. It makes provision for faculty member and members and staff, but in this case, faculty members who are retrenched during this period and allows a sort of more graceful transition, which is important given, in some respects, the comments that Dr. Martin made, given the need to continue to manage our universities while we're fundamentally transforming them. So I see this as a cost of transition. It's an important one. It's an investment in our people, and our people are as not only our most resort, not only the resource that takes up most of our budget, they're the most important resource in terms of delivering the educational experiences that we deliver to our students.
Yeah.
And.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, Brad. I would just, you know, I just want to, I want to echo what Dan said, you know, this is when you're managing a huge redesign like this, obviously, there are many factors that go into it. We need to keep moving forward, and we need to be very conscious. You know, I truly believe not only of doing the very best that we can for the loyal and outstanding staff and employees, our faculty, et cetera. But as Dan said, it isn't just you don't flip a switch and then it suddenly happens. You know, there has to be a transition and you know, there has to be some, 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 some history and some, you know, form of moving in such a way that it isn't so abrupt that nobody knows what's going on, and there's institutional memory and all of those considerations. And I also think that I think a lot needs to be said for how we were able to work with AppScuff and with the legislature and the governor's office, you know, and coming up with a package where this reflects the particular thing that you're looking at, but taken in the context of the whole and looking at it holistically. It's a piece of a package that has been, you know, basically very carefully thought through so that we can move forward. So I would urge you to look at it not, not sort of just as one discrete piece, but you know, as part of the holistic package for which we've also talked about the funding, the additional funding that we got from the state.
Now, the first six side letters make sense. I'm not sure why we can't wait. Three weeks from today, we have our board meeting that's been planned for many, many, many months that all the public knows about. This meeting was thrown together a week ago, but number seven, this one with the retrenchments, I'm just looking page twenty-four where it says deferral of retrenchments. All retrenchments that might otherwise have taken place at the end of the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, or two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three academic years shall be deferred until the end of two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four academic year. So what we're basically saying is the thing that impacts seventy percent of our budget, we're taking that off the table as far as how we can manage our costs and keep the system solvent. And without board members having the headcount numbers, I'm sure those numbers, seemingly those numbers are out there. We're this far into the school year. They might not be released yet, but I feel like as a board member, I should have those numbers already. It's just hard to imagine that we're going to agree to basically eliminate retrenchments for the next couple of years before we even know how many students we have. And if you look over time, we've lost, you know, twenty-five percent of our student body, but we've only lost, you know, five percent of our professors. Those aren't the exact numbers, but it's something like that. The proportional decrease in the number of professors has not matched the decrease in the student body, and it's not financially sustainable. And as board members, we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that our costs are in line with our expenses, and we have to make sure that we keep the system solvent. So would there be a way to break off number seven separately and vote on the first six first? Because I want to support the first six, but I don't think we should do number seven. Can I make that as a motion?
It is. Randy or Andy, do you want to advise procedurally?
Right. Yeah, I'd have to defer to one of you.
Good morning. If Representative is making that as a motion, that motion will need a second to separate items one through six and then separately vote on seven. So we would need to vote that motion up or down first, Madam Chair. It would need a second, and then it would need to be a vote. Representative Roy, would you state your, could you state your motion for the board members?
Yeah. Yeah, my motion is that we separate these into two separate votes. The first vote on side letters one through six, and then a second vote on side letter number seven.
Okay, is there a second?
If there's a second, you can just use your audio to voice a second. You don't need to use the raise hand feature.
Yeah, I'll back it up.
That was David Mazur.
Okay, is there, is there discussion?
Well, I'll go. Just to reiterate what I said, that the first six make a lot of sense. They deal specifically with the integrations, common sense kind of stuff. Number seven is frightening. You know, as board members making a very important financial decision without having any of the relevant information in front of us. And so I urge people to support the motion. I urge people to support the first vote on the first six and to vote no on the second vote for number seven.
Is there further discussion?
Brian's had his hand up for a while, and I would like to speak too, please.
This is just discussion on the motion to separate, correct?
Yeah, this is a discussion on the motion to separate, so.
Exactly.
Okay.
Am I muted?
Hello? Yeah. We have a hand up. Dr. Phillips says his hand up.
I'd like to speak about the motion. I'd like to speak against the motion. I see all seven of these as being of a piece. I don't think this is a wise decision to sort of separate out all the articles. The articles all have the same basic philosophical theme. We're trying to change how we do things at six universities. To do that, we have to have the people involved working actively and happily in some fashion to achieve that goal. All six that you talked about, Brad, they do that because they're trying to show that there's a continuity from the past to the present. They are talking about continuity of evaluation procedures. You're not going to change the evaluation procedures for tenure or promotion. With retransplant, you like telling people, you're going to have a job for the next three years. You're going to have a job as you work and do this. So if you tell people they give no hope that they may be going to be retrenched, at the same time, you're telling them that their university is being radically changed. What's their motivation to change it in a way that's effective and constructive? We're trying to invest in people to make sure that we can grow these universities, and we need to be investing in the people that are going to be doing it. We need to give them something that says this is going to be to your benefit, that you're not going to be thrown to the wolves and expected to simply change universities at the same time. It would be extraordinarily unwise to separate these out when they're all of the same piece, to motivate individuals in these universities to actually do the job of creating brand-new entities, which nobody hears. Needs to realize how difficult that is, difficult that actually is going to be to get people motivated to change everything that they do. We need to give them some reason. We need to give them some reason to think that they are being appreciated and respected. And that the universities are going to respect them in turn for the work that they do. So I speak heavily against the motion. It's turned down.
Jamie, I think you were extraordinarily articulate and. Said what I was trying to say much, much more eloquently, so I appreciate that. Brian, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you. And I just wanted to make sure that board members understood a number of different elements of that side letter. So there is the provision for any retrenchment that are identified to be deferred. However, that is contingent upon funding from the Commonwealth. So that is an important element of that side letter to consider. And this, this academic year, there are actually conversations already at two institutions involving retrenchment. So those conversations continue. Universities still have the ability to identify changes that they need to make. So this side letter really just addresses the effective date of those changes. Additionally, there is, towards the end of that side letter. A provision to extend the deadline date. For the enhanced sick leave payout, which actually expires on September 30th. And so that has an extension through November 15th. And it also offers an additional incentive by increasing the payout to what the payout is in the first window. So those are all elements that the parties negotiated in an attempt to reduce reliance on retrenchment. And certainly, even if a letter of intent to retrench is identified for an individual. That allows that individual to have preferential rights to be hired at another university. That actually has the need. So if we're able to transition individuals to other universities. Through this side letter, then that mitigates the need to. At one university and then provides opportunity at the other university. I just wanted to point those out.
Those are very important details and clarifications, Brian, thank you. And I think the critical piece, I think, Brad, that you're concerned about, which is with regard to. Our doing our fiduciary responsibility. You know, to be accountable for revenues and expenses. This is, as Brian said, I'm just going to reiterate it. It's not really relevant to this because this is contingent upon that additional funding. So are there any other?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Brad.
Yeah, so how does that work? So contingent on funding, so what's the? What's the formula for that? Like if the system gets a dollar more, there's no retrenchments? Or is it a million dollars more, 10 million more, 100 million more? How does that work? You know, there's not going to be a retention, a retrenchment based, you know, contingent on funding. What does that mean?
So as, so as an example, you know, this year we received seven and a half million. And so if next year, so that, you know. Based on preliminary estimates. You know, that potentially has the ability to allow individuals to continue to the next academic year, which is 2223. So next year, if we don't get any additional money from the Commonwealth. Then those individuals that have been identified for retrenchment that haven't been placed at other universities. They would actually end at the conclusion of the spring 23 semester.
And Cindy, Senator Martin has his hand up?
Yes, I was just going to call on him.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Well, thank you. I actually support what's being proposed here to strip this out. And I am a little concerned that we're going to make. Staffing related decisions based on hypotheticals, whether or not we receive money. When in reality, and I kind of say. Experience of what we're even engaged in to begin with is basing our staffing based on needs, based on enrollment. And the fact that we don't have those numbers yet, and I believe my office even reached out for them this week. To get them in order to make this decision. Why are we doing this now until we see that information? I mean, that could absolutely go to solve anybody's concerns potentially. Or it may also raise concerns with board members once they see that information. So I'm perfectly fine with the first six, but I'm a little perplexed of why we're looking at potentially. Or making an argument that this is going to be based on, well, if we get more money in the future. We're just going to, you know, we'll be able to do this. When in reality is it should be based on what our enrollment needs are and what it requires. So I just wanted to weigh in here on that and I support it.
The Chancellor has his hand up.
Dan?
Yeah, let me just weigh in again. So there is nothing in the side letter that takes retrenchment off the table, absolutely nothing. Zero. We will continue to implement our sustainability policy annually. We have to. Doesn't matter what our, I mean, what we have to do is conditioned by our enrollments. Our enrollments don't change our commitment to implementing the board's policy. And we'll continue to do that. All this side letter does, it cushions the blow. On impacted people. Our people. That's all it does. It takes some of the funding. That we have pulled together through a variety of means. And invest it in our people, in our morale. Not recurrently, not in an ongoing way, not in a way that adds to foundational or base costs. In a way that simply cushions the blow. So what is envisaged in the side letter, just to be absolutely specific. Is that any faculty member who is identified for retrenchment. Either this year or the following two years. Will have an effective retrenchment date. Of June 2024. Which gives us three years, if we need it. To find them, to help them find. A soft landing. I want, remind board members, may not be refreshing your memories, that last year we started with 118, I think, retrenchments. And we were able to winnow the number down to under 40 by working closely with our faculty to help them find alternative. Places by helping faculty move across campuses to openings that might turn up by supporting. Those kinds of changes. My expectation is that I'm already seeing it happening in the two institutions that are. Looking seriously at retrenchment this year. That we are already engaged in the very same process. Identifying the number of people that we need, the number of people that. Maybe surplus to that need and working with them to help them find alternative. Employment. So that's, that is what the side letter does. It gives us that opportunity. It's, it's a math, this is a people business. And it's a massive, it's not a massive investment in terms of dollars, it's an investment in morale. As Dr. Phillips was saying. I want to make a meta point because I think it may be important and it's going to come up again in October. This is a state owned university system, it's well known. And naturally, its future will be determined by decisions that are made by the state, by its funding. Somehow. Somehow. We have to figure out how to build a coalition. Around a funding level. Which is appropriate. For an efficiently run university system. And I would say at this stage, we are pretty darn good. And running near peak efficiency. That coalition is going to require people in it who don't like certain aspects. Of our priorities. So coalition building is all about compromise. Right? So in October, we'll see that package, we'll have an opportunity to discuss it. This is a part of it. This is an investment in our people, not in terms of money. But in terms of commitment. And statement of our value. That folks who have worked with us for dozens of years in so many cases and are. Shaping the future of our students. And are absolutely essential to the educational process and the services that we're just not going to treat them as if we're a. Business that's going to close its doors. And leave town. It's not with public higher education, it's all about. And it's in that spirit that we put this side letter together in conversation, obviously with our. Colleagues at AppScuff. I am not worried about our ability to operate effectively. We've reduced our operating costs by $200 million in two years. We have reduced our accounts so that it is almost. In line with our enrollments. But in pursuing that path, which as you know, I believe is the right path to pursue, we cannot forget. That we are people business. So that's, that's my point, I'm sticking to it, thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Are there any other comments?
Yeah, I'm going to call. Yeah, I'm sorry, I just, I do need to say one more thing. I didn't read side letter number seven the same way as it was just explained. It absolutely has to do with not having retrenchments. It puts it off for two years. So our enrollment could go down to 50,000 students. And we're pretty much locked in and it's undefined. What does that mean, you know, contingent on funding? You know, and, and. I think the fall enrollment numbers are out there. Every university has, you know, somebody at student services or registrar or somebody. I mean, we know how many students there are. Board members should have that information. We shouldn't get that information after we vote on how many professors we're going to have to teach those students. I mean, it shouldn't be a secret to board members what our headcount is. I hope our headcount went up from last year, but I suspect that's probably not the case. I hope we have to hire more professors. I hope the headcount says we have 100,000 students and we have to go on a hiring binge and hire a bunch of more people. But I'm cautiously, you know, thinking that's probably not the case. And, you know, we have a responsibility to financially protect this system. I mean, we have very good people working for the system. But the system is here for the students and the system has to financially survive. You know, just for the sake of argument, any professors that would get retrenched, they're all smart people. They could all go get other jobs, making more money than they're making now. So I don't know if, you know, they're, you know, I'm not trying to sound insensitive. But we can't put the financial future, the system at stake because we feel bad that somebody might get laid off. They're smart people, they'll do very well, they'll get jobs in private sector, they'll get jobs at other universities. They will be very successful, they're very smart, hardworking people. What I'm talking about here is we have to make sure this system is financially sustainable. And we've done a lot over the last few years to make it financially sustainable. You know, things like the student to faculty ratio, getting that in line in an affordable way. This kind of throws that out the window for a couple of years. And I just really think that we're making a decision without having all the information in front of us. So I just urge a no vote. Why urge a yes vote on the motion? A yes on the first six side letters and a no on side letter number seven. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Martin, did you have your hand up again? Did you want to speak again?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I just want to comment, I appreciate what Dan was saying. And these kind of things that we're engaged on, obviously, are not always easy. And it's not always easy dealing here with PASHI. It's not easy for our many thousands of employers over the Commonwealth. Who've gone through extremely difficult times over the course of the last 18 months or possibly beyond. But I really guard against the message that's sent. That's saying that if we get more money in the future, we're going to extend. The ability to have an employee or keep them on board. Even though that position may not be required based on what the true needs of that institution are. And we have to be very weary of that and, and, you know, we don't have to go before. This is the kind of topic that when we see or talk about in the financial accountability hearings. When Dan comes before the General Assembly, is how do we make that justification? Or a promise for the future, future spending. On positions possibly that aren't even going to be needed or need to be addressed in order to rightsize. An institutions and, you know, staff to faculty ratio. It doesn't make sense to me and I will just say, given the fact that we're meeting in October. I really don't understand why there was this urgency to do this today. Especially when there's members who have been asking for data and information on enrollment and things. When we're going to be meeting coming up here shortly. I, I, I'm sorry, I appreciate what everyone's feelings on this and trying to, in their minds, do the right thing. But I really have a hard time with this, finding the logic. In what's being proposed, given what we're trying to do. And the message that it sends to the same people that you come to wanting to have more funding. So with that, I'll end there.
And Madam Chair, I'll clean my hands up.
Okay. All right, Dan, any further comment from you? And no other hands are up?
No other hands.
Dan?
No, I think, I think the context is, I think we're struggling with context. This is not, this will not delay us. In exercising our managerial prerogatives to address our enrollments or our financial situation. It just creates a different exit path for impacted faculty. It is, and I'm not sure how, I'm not sure what are the words I can use to say that. It is not forbidding. Retrenchment. There is no intention of deviating from our sustainability policy. We'll continue to do what we need to do in order to operate in a sustainable way.
Yeah, which we will have an update on at the October meeting as well to demonstrate that we. Are not deviating from that in any way. I think also, I just want to add, you know, I'm not sure if I would use the word urgent. But, but in terms of, you know, bringing this all today, except that. By contract, we need to have things in place so that we can work, so that we can start to move forward. With curriculum development. At these, at these integrated schools. And I think even a few weeks makes a difference, right, Dan? From what I understand, in terms of. Being able to have the time needed to get this done in order for the launch. So we also are worried, the additional factor is we're working backwards from a timeline on a launch. That is very, very sensitive.
I will say.
Okay, and, okay, anything further to add? Okay. All right. That being said, I will first call for a voice vote. And then if there are no's, we'll go to a roll call vote on the motion to vote on items one to six separately from item seven. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. All opposed to this? Please.
No.
You say no, no?
No.
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 Okay, I think, Randy, we need to.
We need a roll call.
Go to a roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
You're welcome. Governor Bobo.
And he's on the phone, so we'll give him a moment to come off of mute.
Sure.
Just. And you press star six to unmute yourself, Governor Bobo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Representative Briggs.
No.
Governor Gindelsberger.
No.
Designee Tara Williams.
No.
Senator Martin.
Yes.
Governor Mazur.
Yes.
Governor Moskowitz. Designee Tony Garcia. Representative Roy.
Yes.
Governor Roberts.
No.
Designee Thomas Gombar.
Designees don't vote.
Correct.
Sorry. Governor Scott. I'm sorry, Governor Scott.
I vote yes.
Okay. Chair Shapiro.
No.
Governor Skinner.
No.
Governor Smith.
Yeah.
Governor Washington.
Yes.
Governor Weaver.
No.
Governor Yeomans.
No.
Seven yes, eight no.
Okay, the motion, I believe.
Excuse me? It does not.
It does not. Thank you. It's a little confusing, I know, the way it's written. Okay, the motion does not pass, so I think we go back to the main motion.
Correct.
Do we have that? Do we have that on the screen?
Yes, I can bring it up for you.
Okay, that has also, it's also been seconded, is further discussion. And let's have it on the screen so we, it's clear, by the way, it's phrased, you know, how people.
And it's the motion that's in the, yeah, the motion in the board agenda.
Right. Okay. Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, I'm going to go to, oh, I'm sorry, Randy.
I see no hands right now. Again, if you're on the phone, it's star nine to raise your hand if you want to comment on the main motion. Or click raise hand if you're on the Zoom. Okay, I see no hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, I will go first to a voice vote on this then.
You can probably, Madam Chair, you can probably just go straight to a roll call vote if you want. Yeah.
Okay, let me, let me read it, though. Let me just read it again, you know, vocally. And then, Sharice, if you'll do the roll call. The motion is that the Board of Governors ratifies the attached side letters and authorizes the chancellor to execute the appropriate documents. Okay, Sharice, now if you please.
All right.
Would do the roll call.
Governor Bobo.
And he's on the phone, so we'll give him a moment to come off of mute.
Yes.
Representative Briggs.
Yes.
Governor Gindelsberger.
Yes.
Senator Martin.
No.
Governor Mazur.
Yeah.
Governor Moskowitz. Designee Tony Garcia. Representative Roy.
No.
Governor Roberts.
Yes.
Governor Scott.
No.
Chair Shapiro.
Yes.
Governor Skinner.
Yes.
Governor Smith.
Yes.
Governor Washington.
Yes.
Governor Weaver.
Yes.
Governor Yeomans.
Yes.
Motion, motion carries.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. So I think that that being the only item of business on our agenda, we can now adjourn the meeting. Does anybody have anything further before I do that? Okay.
See no hands.
Okay. See no hands. All right. Well, then, thank you all very much and I look forward to seeing you in October. Take care, everybody. Bye-bye.
Have a good day, everyone.
Take care. Bye-bye.